Okay, I call the meeting to order, City of University Heights City Council Meeting. Today is May ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, and the meeting is being conducted electronically. Thanks, everyone, for attending. I call the meeting to order. For councilor present, Tim Schroeder should arrive shortly, and Michael tell us when he arrives. First order of business is approval of minutes of April eleventh and April twenty-nine, twenty-fifth, April twenty-fifth. Are there any additions or corrections to either minutes? Hearing none, both minutes are approved by unanimous consent. Are there any members of the public here? I don't see any.
No, we've had no one. We had no one request to join.
Okay, I'll move on to mayor's report. So the first thing is proclamation of older American month. And here's the proclamation, older American month proclamation. Whereas University Heights includes a growing number of older Americans who contribute their time, wisdom, and experience to our community. And whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds have the opportunity to participate and live independently. And whereas University Heights recognizes the need to create a community that offers the services and support older adults may need to make choices about how they age. And whereas University Heights can work to build an even better community for our older residents by not limiting our thinking about aging, aging, exploring and contributing stereotypes, emphasizing the many positive aspects of aging, inspiring older adults to push past traditional boundaries and embrace our community's diversity. Now, therefore, I, Louise Frome, Mayor of University Heights, do hereby proclaim May two thousand and twenty-three to be Older Americans Month. I urge every resident to celebrate our older citizens, help to create an inclusive society, and accept the challenge of flexible thinking around aging. And Kathy Dolan is here tonight to talk to the council about things that they're doing in Johnson County. Kathy, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. I'm so glad to be here. I wanted to talk a little bit about the history of the Johnson County Livable Community for Successful Aging, which I'm going to call J C L C going forward, because the meeting can only last so long. And wanted to let you all know that some time ago, the World Health Organization came up with a series of, with a set of characteristics based on policies and metrics to evaluate the livability of communities across all age groups. That A A R P, you know, those folks formerly known as the American Association for Retired People, used those metrics and those guidelines that the World Health Organization came up with to create the concept of livable community for successful aging across the United States. In Johnson County, we're somewhat unusual, because we are participating right now only at the county level. Most places, including Albuquerque, participate as a city or a community, a town, even a village. And one of the reasons I'm here is to invite you all to become part of this A A R P Livable Community for Successful Aging initiative. We are building our program at the county level and hoping that we can help the communities in Johnson County to build at their own level as well. The materials that A A R P has allows communities to compare the livability of their own community with those of others across the United States. As a county, we're actually doing better than national averages, but some of the national averages are kind of low. If you want to know more about the metrics, you can find those if you search for A A R P, eight domains of livable communities. And that will get you to a tool that will allow you to compare your community with others. So that's one of the reasons I'm here is to invite the community of University Heights to become part of this livable community initiative. And if you're interested in doing so, you can find out more from our livable community website. If you go to JohnsonCounty.gov and look for livable community, that will take you to our website. And you can also contact Jeff Kalbach, who is our county aging specialist, and he can help you with how to get started with all of that and what needs to be done, what the expectations are. We're finding that in the community, we never know what we can do that can help the community going in, but we have learned so much and come up with so many good ideas since we've been a part of this. One of the things that we're doing right now, we have what we call action teams that are groups of volunteers that help with projects that the policy board sets for a given year. And one of our action teams, we call the A A R P H Friendly Action Team, and they're actually working on creating and distributing a countywide assessment for the needs of Americans or county residents fifty-five and over. And we're hoping, we're doing this in conjunction with a grant being that we hope will be awarded to the College of Nursing. And we're trying to refine the tool, the assessment tool that we'll use for a survey, so it can be used in other parts of Iowa and perhaps even in other parts of the country. That assessment is a requirement for our A A R P standing. But we're also hoping that we can share our findings with the communities in the area and that we can get it set up so that we can extract findings for specific, specific communities. So if you wanted to know what the people of University Heights that participated in this assessment had to say, we can certainly, we're going to try to set up so we can find that information for you. And at each area's request, provide that for them. We also have a monthly newsletter at our website. I invite you to read. Our website is not just for people that are fifty-five plus, it's also for family members that might want to help aging members of their family, so that it's there for everyone, and our newsletter tries to keep people apprised of what's going on in the area. And we partner with, I think, all of the organizations and living communities, I'll put it that way, in the area. They are generally part of our organization. One of our big initiatives for this year that we have started off with and have been really happy with is that we have been named a dementia-friendly community, which is part of a initiative that began in the United Kingdom, spread to the United States, and now there is an entity called Dementia Friendly Iowa, of which we are part. And I believe it is also affiliated with A A R P. And what we're doing is we're providing trainings for interacting or helping community members that have dementia. And really, at any age, because there are people that are younger than fifty-five that have dementia as well. We're trying to help people recognize that what dementia is, that it is not inherently dangerous, and what family members, community organizations, and businesses can do to become more dementia-friendly. And if there are businesses in your community that might like to do that, we would certainly be interested in doing so. We actually recently trained law enforcement personnel from all over the county in our dementia-friendly program. And if that's something that you might like to know more about or do, then the best way would be to talk to Jeff Kalbach, who can put you in touch with people who could set up a program. We have two levels of training. One is called Dementia Friend. It's an hour-long session where you learn about people with dementia, what helps them to do better in situations, what helps them, what, what makes it harder for them to cope than people without dementia. Dementia. And then we also have meetings that are called Dementia Champion Meetings for people who might like to be able to train others in helping dementia sufferers. And we also are trying very hard to help businesses learn some of the things that they can do, so that people with dementia can go to the bank, that they can go to the grocery store. One of our pie-in-the-sky goals is to find restaurants that would be willing to have set aside as part of their day as quiet time, so that people with dementia and their caregivers could, and family members could go out to dinner without the noise and distraction that restaurants usually offer, which can be detrimental to dementia sufferers. Okay, two more to go. We also have a group that deals with fall prevention that runs through the University of Iowa's Fall Prevention Program, and we have ongoing courses in Tai Chi and general fall prevention. We have people who give who, who will talk to groups about how to prepare a house for someone who might be at risk for falling. And this year, where that group, in conjunction with some of the other groups, are hoping to put on what we're calling a Fall Prevention Health and Resource Fair. And that event is currently scheduled for nine to twelve at the Kirkwood Regional Center at the Oakdale Campus. And we'll be inviting in people who can provide services or goods that would be of use to older Americans. We'll also have some health screening events, and we're hoping to hold dementia-friendly sessions there as well, and possibly a Tai Chi class. We would like to invite anyone who would like to attend to come see what Iowa City and Johnson County and all the other towns in the area have to offer. Then our final group deals with housing. And we've been focusing on two different things with that group. We are trying to increase awareness about ADUs, auxiliary dwelling units, granny flats, tiny houses, as an alternative for older Americans or their caregivers, so that they can remain in their home or on their property for longer and have family members or staff available to help them. And one of the things that we're doing with that right now is we partnered with the Iowa Realtors Business Show, and we are waiting to hear if we have received a grant from A A R P to buy a whole bunch of Legos. And Iowa City Home Developers have a program where they invite kids to design houses with Legos in a competition. And we're hoping to invite some kids to be able to participate in a similar competition for auxiliary dwelling units, because the rules are similar but not identical. The other thing we're doing with that initiative is we are offering model zoning regulations to communities that might want, that don't have any yet. Does University Heights have have zoning? Does it allow auxiliary dwelling units? Most communities don't, or at least they don't have any regulations.
Go ahead. We don't have a lot of land available.
But you see, that's the beauty of, of ADUs, because you can build them on existing lots.
Right, but we don't have zoning for that.
Okay, would you be interested in finding out more? I could refer you to the fellow who's behind our initiative for that. He, he's been meeting with different towns in the area.
Well, we'll look at your website and see.
Okay, there isn't much on our website about that particular thing, but I could certainly, could I have them send you some information?
Sure, send it to me or the city clerk. You know, you have both of our emails.
Okay.
Okay, and if we have questions, anyone can contact you through Mike or myself. We have your email. Okay, Kathy?
Give me one more minute, and I promise.
Okay, one more minute.
Another thing that we're doing with our housing group is that we're helping to find ways to assist those people who have been, have had, developed problems because of predatory purchasers of mobile home courts. So I don't know that University Heights has any, but that's another thing we're active with. And then finally, I want to invite all of you to be aware of our Johnson County Aging Specialist Jeff Kalbach, who can provide help to find assistance for adults, senior adults, and their caregivers in accessing resources that they might need. Thank you so much for having me here.
Thank you, Kathy. You can stay for the meeting, or you can leave, whatever you'd like to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I'm going to move, please, left. I'm going to move to the next proclamation, and I'm going to read parts of it. Whereas throughout the month of May, residents of University Heights can experience the joys of bicycling by participating in educational programs, rides, commuting events, charity events, or by simply going for a ride. And whereas these activities create greater public awareness of rights and responsibilities of bicycles to improve safety for all. Now, therefore, I, Louise Frome, Mayor of University Heights, Iowa, do hereby proclaim May two thousand and twenty-three as Bicycle Month and May fifteenth through nineteenth as Bike to School and Work Week at University Heights. I urge all residents who are able to join in the observance by bicycling for fitness, recreation, or to commute to work. Further, I ask all motorists to drive safely and with full attention to the road by putting away electronic devices, obeying all traffic signs, signals, and speed limits during sharing the road by allowing no less than five feet of separation when passing a bicyclist or taking on the adjacent lane to pass on roads with speed limits over twenty-five miles per hour and yielding to bicyclists and pedestrians as required by law. And so those are our two proclamations today. And then I have a couple other things under mayor's report. Lori Kamira pointed out to me today that we need to check on mowing for the city properties. And Jack Loverman, Stan's son, is not going to be able to mow this year. And so I I wanted to ask about Bobby Scott Kids, who have a mowing business, if they'd be interested in mowing the city properties. And I asked Steve Ballard if that's okay. And Steve, I don't want to speak for you. Why don't you just say what you said?
Sure, I said that there's nothing that prohibits that. If, if the council is going to consider awarding, you know, it's a contract. It's not, not a big one, but it's a mowing contract to Bobby's kids, and Bobby should recuse himself from consideration and voting. And other than that, if the council wants to make that arrangement, the council is well within its rights to do so.
What we paid Jack Loverman last year was two hundred and seventy dollars a month. And what we did was we added one of the, the island at Mahaska Court, and we worked that out. Bobby, did your kids?
Yeah.
Did you confirm with them that they would like to do this?
Yep, they, they're, they're in favor. They would love to do it.
Great. And is that, did they say that price was okay?
Yeah, yes, they did.
Okay, I, I sent the properties that we, we do currently. And if, I mean, I guess I can repeat them, Triangle Park, the area around the City Garden, that's right there at Stella, you know, in front of Stella. And then a strip that's in the side of North Sunset, across from the Shive Property, that's next to the, the ravine. But there's other areas there that are mowed by O U P, just that one strip. And then, of course, the island at Mahaska Court. Those are the four areas. So I guess we should get a motion in a second is if for the, do they have a name of their company?
Yeah, Mobros.
Okay, so is there a motion to hire?
I'll motion.
Motion by Steph. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Doug. Discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Is anyone opposed? Okay, so motion carries four, zero, with one abstaining. And, okay, thank you. And we'll go on. Oh, and then the last thing is I hate to say, but I need another special meeting in June. I was talking to Ryan today, and he wants to add a street project this year, Monroe Street Project, and replace some panels. And he can get a public hearing ready for the May twenty-third special meeting. And so we're already meeting on May twenty-third, as you know. And then to get enough time to get the bids and everything, we were looking at a June twenty-seventh special meeting date, probably take, you know, fifteen, twenty minutes. How's June twenty-seventh work for, can at least three council members be there?
Yep.
Okay, there's one.
Yes.
Yes, or, okay, thumbs up from Stephanie, thumbs up from Tim. And so there we go. Okay, so put that on your calendars. Thank you very much. Let's go back to my agenda here. Okay, I think we've covered that business. And legal report, Steve, you have a couple of resolutions. Could you, since you wrote them, why don't you say them? You're on mute.
Thank you. Resolution twenty-three thirteen is renewal of the city's agreement with Johnson County for seats para-transport services. There's no change in the compensation or the rate. For several years now, the arrangement between the city and the county has been thirty dollars on a per-ride basis. I didn't look at the budget to see what the city's been spending, but my sense is it's not a lot. And so that, that is before you as the renewal of the seats agreement, and there's no changes from, from last year.
Okay, so twenty-three thirteen, that resolution is before you. Do I have a a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. I'll second, Lisa.
Motion by Lisa. Second by Bobby. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Gone.
Aye.
More? Lisa?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Schroder? Scott?
Aye.
Swales?
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero.
Thank you.
So then the next resolution, twenty-three fourteen, we always do these in tandem. This is the renewal of the twenty-eighty agreement between the City of University Heights and the City of Iowa City for transit or bus, city bus service. And this one, the only thing that changes from last year is the price. They escalated with, based on a cost of living. I think it went up about seven percent, which seems about like the inflation rate, inflation rate at a given moment, anyway. So the annual cost for F Y twenty-four would be forty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Okay.
No other changes, excuse me.
Thank you, Steve. Can I have a motion in a second?
A motion.
Okay, motion by Tim. And Lisa, you raised your hand, so you'll be the second. Okay, I know it's really hard to make motions in seconds, because everybody talks at the same time. So this is resolution number twenty-three fourteen for the city bus. Roll call vote.
More?
There you are. We can't hear you.
I don't know why. I feel like I'm yelling.
Okay.
Aye.
Thank you. Schroder?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Swales?
Aye.
Gone.
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero.
Thank you. And are there any other questions for Steve? He made comments. I think we can talk about them during the police report. If there's any questions there, then we'll go on to clerk's report, right? And you had approval of Stella's. Do you want to say a few words?
Sure, Stella's liquor license, as all liquor licenses are renewable yearly. There is an online portion that the Alcoholic Beverages Division completed locally. Chief Kelsey does a background check. Building Inspector Gert does a structure and compliance check. And all of that has been passed, so I would recommend that you approve Stella's liquor license. And that's just a simple motion.
Right.
With a voice vote.
Is there a motion?
I'll motion.
Motion by Steph. Is there a second? Second by Bobby. Okay, all in favor for the Stella Liquor License Renewal, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries five, zero. Mike, did you have anything else?
Um, the only other thing I was going to mention, I said we only had one permit. We had one come in right after, it actually came in electronically after I sent out my report, and that's from the school district in Horn Elementary, from that contractor. So that, that one also got approved. That was also a twenty-nine thousand dollar building permit, so I ran that check right to the bank.
Thank you. Any questions for Mike? Okay, city treasurer report. Lori sent the treasures report. I see John's here tonight. And in it, she has the warrants list. But I did want to ask John, how are things going with the transition?
It's going pretty good. Lori and I set to meet six o'clock Sunday evening. That was weather delayed.
Oh, yeah.
So we did get together until, I don't know, it was around nine twenty or so. And we spent some quality time there in that little closet that's Mike's office. It's about eleven o'clock in the morning, so the transitioning has started. So we went, we went over a lot, and we're going to get together as we can. And I think I'm well on speed to the next, the next month's meeting to actually deliver the treasurer's report, if you, if you need me to speak. With that, Chief Kelsey, it's not urgent, but sometime I need to, I think I need to get in the pipeline for access to the office.
Yeah, I saw those emails go through today, and I can arrange that. I still haven't got Tim's key, because I never see him at the, there's nothing that happens at the community center. So yes, we'll make that happen.
Great. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, John. So the warrants are, were listed. Did everyone have a chance to review them? She sent them this morning, I believe. Are there any objection to paying the warrants? Hearing none, the warrants will be approved and paid by unanimous consent. Okay, we'll go down to chief report. You sent that today, chief.
And I'd like to touch on a couple items of it. First and foremost, again, Officer Brinkema is retiring. His last day at work will be Friday, May nineteenth. I've had a couple conversations with Brian about how we can recognize his time with University Heights and his career. Brian does not really want any sort of party or large gathering. He suggested that on his last day, we have sort of an open house that anybody can stop by if they want. So currently, as far as any sort of public or elected officials coming in and, and thank you, Brian, and wishing him well. His last day is Friday, May nineteenth, and I figured from six o'clock until eight o'clock, I'll see that the community center is open. I'll see that there are other officers where I'm available to, to take any calls that come in and we'll have some, some light refreshments and beverages. Uh, I will get Brian a retired officer identification from the City of University Heights, the Police Department, and I will get him a, a retirement badge. And then aside from that, I and probably some of the officers will contribute towards, towards a personal gift for him. So that is set for May nineteenth. The mayor reminded me that, or we discussed briefly salaries and wages and how that hasn't been finalized as far as the increase. Uh, Brian's leading not probably does impact that. And as, as, uh, Steve Ballard already mentioned, currently inflation's at seven percent. I mean, it's even higher than it was when we first started these discussions. So I promised the mayor that I would get together with with Bobby and Stephanie again and try to hammer out some final numbers. Uh, skipping down to University of Iowa over time, I was contacted today, uh, by the University of Iowa Police Department and due to some constru- action, they are going to begin to reroute their campuses, uh, through the thing, by commuter drive and out onto Melrose. And that means that during peak times, commuter times, both morning and afternoon, Monday through Friday, they'll be campus traffic added on to, uh, additional vehicle traffic because of the construction they're doing. We are going to try to help University of Iowa staff that position. So Monday through Friday, uh, two times from six-thirty to eight AM and again from four until five-thirty PM. Uh, there will be officers staffed at the intersection of Melrose and Think Fine Land. That's Melrose End and Emerald Court, uh, to facilitate traffic flow there. It's going to be a mess. Uh, we're scheduling currently out through June thirtieth. But this is a project that will go on at least all summer. So just so you are, all are aware.
Wow.
You probably will hear questions on that. Uh, that traffic detail does begin May fifteenth is when we're starting to schedule officer sports. Uh, skipping over to page two, the Olive Court Airbnb information, that's item F. The Police Department can handle the calls for service and respond, and we can address the, the noise and the parking issues. Uh, the mayor reached out to me after she'd received a complaint direct from, from a resident on Olive Court this past weekend. Uh, but as you can see, beginning April twenty-first, we've been out there April twenty-first, April twenty-second, April twenty-fifth, April thirtieth. We fielded calls about the property on May fourth and May fifth. Uh, I didn't list the address there, although I certainly can provide that. Again, we can handle the the ordinance related, the police related calls for service, but it's something that I expect you all to hear about. And you all to struggle to deal with, not just at that location, but Airbnbs throughout University Heights. So I wanted to make sure you are aware of it. I included the Airbnb listing that shows that's renting on weekends anyway for three hundred and forty-seven dollars a night. It is a four-bedroom, uh, the calls that we had on April twenty-first and twenty-second, based on the social media posts that were going up and the number of people that were coming and going. I'm guessing there was between thirty and forty people in the residence. And again, at three forty-seven a night, so you collect ten dollars at the door and, and, and you're good to go. Uh, but anyway, just for your information, I wanted that out there. Uh, on page three, Harold Slate, some of you may know, he's our crossing guard. He had surgery on the twenty-sixth, was hopeful that he could get back to work in mid or late May. I spoke to him today. Was, I can't remember if he had me and is now having hip or the other way around, but he's in a lot of pain and I while he's still hopeful that he will return, I, I really don't expect him to by the end of the year, but he's, he's working on getting better. And finally, item, and, uh, I represent, or I, I'm fortunate enough to be included on a couple of different ragbride committees. And I will again, uh, be participating as a representative of University Heights. And it makes sense to them because I can represent both large and small law enforcement agencies. So I've met with them, uh, participate on their advisory committee and have been part of at least the conversations about the, the current route, both locally and statewide. And I will be participating in that the first full week of June, June fourth through June tenth is the, the final traverse of the state in preparation, uh, for ragbride. And that's the last time that we will meet with. At least the last time I will meet with community members, law enforcement committees, anybody that has any questions. Skipping ahead into the next item, automated traffic enforcement, traffic cameras. We discussed this at last full council meeting or regular council meeting, and as I recall anyway, it kind of ended with the suggestion that everybody ponder the use of ATE and, and work through any questions they had or come up with questions. Perhaps talk to their neighbors and just mull it over to see if this is something that we want to pursue as a community. So I just, I, again, I want to make sure the conversation doesn't die on the vine. If, if we don't want to pursue it, then then, then let's work towards that. And if we do want to pursue it, then let's work towards that. So I, I'm just looking for direction from council on what your thoughts are. If there's any, any questions, next steps. I spoke with, I provided, I forwarded to Steve Ballard uh, some sample ordinances from other communities as well as, um, draft contract, if you will. I know that Steve put together just a draft order, ordinance. None of those things are, are carved in stone. If you were to pursue this, the community, the council decides on fine structure, both uh, at what speeds over the speed limit violations would be issued, civil violations would be issued, and we also decide on uh, what the actual fine schedule would be. Uh, if we do move forward, I am more than happy to put together kind of a list of talking points, if you will, of, of why this would be beneficial to University Heights and, and what we would hope to gain from it. And while we talked about it already and, and I think there's, I think everybody understands it. Just in a previous role I held with the City of Iowa City as their public information officer, I just, I know how important it is to have consistent messaging that, you know, we don't have to all read from the same script, but we should all be following the same script and, and I shouldn't be saying something that that, you know, the city clerk is, is saying something that not only doesn't match, but perhaps conflicts with the vice ad or the mayor is, or, or a council member is. We we want to make sure that we're all on the same page, and I think that we want to be as transparent as possible moving forward. So whether I put that together for council, if we choose to move forward, or whether I put that together in conjunction with a media release, uh, I just, I'm looking for direction. I don't, I don't want to invest a lot in it. Uh, and I don't think that any of staff does. If this isn't something you're worth, you're looking at at least continuing to move forward. I'm not asking for a uh, vote on a resolution today. I'm not even pushing it forward. I just, I want to make sure as staff I best serve you. And I, I've struggled with the use of ATE. I actually have changed my opinion on, on the use of AT and the time that I'm with. I've been here with this community and I, I think it's a tool that would fit our community well. And that it would address some ongoing concerns that community members have, especially residents along Melrose, George, uh, Cozer have about speeds on their street and those speeds are only fifteen percent of the drivers, but they're still fifteen percent of the drivers. And we average, for example, thirteen thousand plus vehicles on Melrose per day. So that was kind of rambling, but I'm just, I, if there are questions that you would like me to try to answer, or if you want to give me some direction, or if you just want to ponder for a little while, I just don't want the conversation to die. And that is all I have unless anybody has any questions about those points or anything else on my report.
There's a, I mean, from my perspective, there's a lot there that you just went over and I, I'd like to talk about a couple of things. I don't know if it's the right time. Uh, regarding, maybe this is a Steve Ballard, uh, question. You know, I think certainly going back to Airbnb and the kind of the, whatever the nuisance property, if you want to call it that. Um, what options do we have as a city council to be able to um, you know, do what we can to prevent that? You can't, you can't make it perfect for every one, but to deter stuff like that from happening.
Well, the easy solution isn't available to say you can't have an Airbnb. So then what you do is you either enact or enforce ordinances that you already have enacted related to, you know, uh, certainly parking, uh, noise, disorderly house. Um, all of those, those kinds of, uh, ordinances, those ordinances we have in place. And I, you know, I, 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 obviously I defer Steve Kelsey about whether, uh, circumstances presented themselves, that's that somebody could be cited. Um, y- yeah, you know, there's a comment about ten bucks a head to get in. Uh, I, I don't know exactly what was going on. That involves alcohol, that's, you know, that's a, that's a violation of state law. Um, so really, I, another way of saying what I'm trying to get at Bobby is you sort of strip the Airbnb part away from the, of what happened. I mean, even though the reality might be, well, yeah, but it wouldn't have happened if it wasn't an Airbnb because it's, it's a homeowner or owner occupied. We don't think that would happen. And I guess at that point I would say, well, so be it. But the loss, the law doesn't look at it any differently if it's an Airbnb or if it's an owner occupied dwelling or a rented dwelling, uh, long-term. Uh, the, the, the point is what are the, what, what's going on that is, uh, offensive, that, that is problematic? Do we have an ordinance in place to, to try to address that? Uh, are we trying to enforce it? Uh, where, where have we been in terms of enforcement? Um, um, that's what I would say.
And if I can jump back in, this is, uh, Troy again. Uh, the ten dollars a head was just, uh, to my knowledge, that wasn't happening, but my point there is the three fifty a night may sound like a lot. But if it's a four-bedroom or if you're hosting a, a gathering that thirty people are planning on coming into Iowa City to attend. And just like you divide up a dinner check, if you're dividing up your overnight expenses, three hundred and fifty is certainly not cost prohibitive. If it's costing you twenty dollars or less as a, as a place to stay that night. And as far as ordinance enforcement, uh, the first weekend, the April twenty-first and twenty-second, that information came to us. Uh, came to the University Heights Police Department from the Iowa City Police Department who learned about it from the Cedar Rapids Police Department, and these are individuals, or at least some of them were individuals that were known to the Cedar Rapids Police Department. And, and somebody with the department either got tipped off or was monitoring social media feeds, and that's how they, they became aware of this party that was going on. Uh, Iowa City was very interested in the goings on and was also concerned that that the presence of so many people from a nearby community, some of whom had been associated, or at least uh, in the vicinity of other incidents that had occurred in Iowa City. Iowa City was interested in keeping tabs and, and seeing who was coming and going. So that's the way we treated that particular weekend. Uh, the next two weekends that we've dealt with, they've been different groups of people there each time who frankly are unfamiliar with University Heights ordinances on, on many things and you know, the owner of the house isn't there. Heck, the owner of the house wasn't even aware who the house was rented to. We took a complaint from him following that first weekend about damage done to his house. But much like any other offense that we would deal with or any other violation, we're trying to gain compliance and you know, the, the person who's celebrating a wedding, anniversary or an engagement. I, I, I just, I don't typically penalize them for what happened at the property three weeks ago. You know, the, the best example that is, and then I wanted to make sure I ended with it, on the May fifth incident. Uh, the person who contacted the mayor about being awakened at one thirty in the morning by music from the house and who did not report it to the police department, but then reached out to the mayor that following evening when it sounded like the party was starting up again. When we made contact with the people in the house, they were compliant. They moved the cars that were in violation and they turned their music down. So we addressed it. We didn't address it with the citation. But it still modified the behavior of the first time guests that we'd had first time contact with, and we handled it as we would have handled any other call for service. First, educating and trying to gain compliance that way, so. The Airbnb has been a problem now for three weekends in a row. It's generated calls for service of one type another for three weekends in a row. However, it's been different guests at the residence each of those times. And when we have had contact with them each of those times, it when we have had contact with them, not each of those times, we had contact with them, it has modified the behavior. That still doesn't resolve the frustrations of the neighbors on that street who are still having to deal with it every weekend. Sorry, I'm never short-minded.
This is, this is Mike, and one of the things in talking with this, with the chief and the force, Brian Jensen and I went and put together what we think is a pretty comprehensive list of short-term rentals in town. Now, due to state zoning requirements, we can't require, uh, uh, rental permit for short-term state, so, but we have, we have fourteen properties in town. Uh, twelve of which are part of the Airbnb network and the other two are VRBO, which is vacation rental by owner. So there are other issues that I'm trying to track down from that end because all of those properties should be paying hotel motel tax. Now Airbnb, I've come to find out in talking with Josh Hamburger from the Convention and Visitor Bureau, builds those fees right into their Airbnb fees upfront. So we should be okay there. VRBO, I'm still trying to track down what they, what they do and what they know. So hopefully I'll have something to report on that also next month.
And I'm just trying to refresh my memory because I'm completely drawing a blank here, Steve, but there's no be- because, well, I guess, yeah, they don't, they don't have to. Isn't the provision with Airbnb have to be owner occupied? Like, isn't there a I'm just trying to blank on that, or is that just a university heights thing, a hundred and eighty days, so on and so forth. I'm just totally, I can't refresh my memory on that.
Yeah, we Well, we, we've tried to do different things, but the current state of affairs, they, from the Iowa legislature is real simple. We can't regulate an Airbnb, a short-term rental any differently than we regulate an owner occupied home. You know, we can't even regulate as much as we do a, uh, a rental home where we do inspections and, you know, do you have a fire extinguisher? You have an egress window. Uh, what the state law says now is that if you're gonna, if you're gonna, if you're gonna go check to see if, uh, an Airbnb, uh, you know, has certain number of square foot for every bed in the bedroom, you have to do that at, uh, Mayor Fromm's house, you know, I mean, you gotta, it's the same thing you do in an owner occupied home. And so basically that means you can't do much of anything, except we, we do require them to register and provide an emergency contact number, and that's about all we can do. And your rec- your recollection about a hundred and eighty days and different things, I mean, we have we have done or tried to do different things over time, but, um, the legislature is just taking all those, uh, all those abilities away from the city.
Steve. Hmm. Yeah.
Go ahead.
No, no.
I just was gonna say, I think the police have responded well in, um, in talking to them, educating them, and that's worked quite well. Um, so I just wanted to say the police are doing a good job there, but
Yep, you bet.
Yeah, it's frustrating, but I'm glad that, um, Mike had talked to me about you know, trying to get a handle on all that. Uh, Airbnbs and uh, the vacation home. And I think that's a good start for us and make sure. I mean, you know, we had a little bit of a problem with the state sending the money I mean, you know, we had a little bit of a problem with the state sending the money. To some other city. They didn't, they wouldn't say which city. And uh, so I, I think with our addresses Iowa City, Iowa, because we don't have a post office. I'm wondering if some money isn't going someplace else. And we're gonna have to resolve some of those issues too. But Mike and Brian are working on it, and of course, the chief. Is working with his department on this. To do the best they can. It's a little frustrating, I know. For everyone and the residents too. So um, is that all your questions, Bobby? I think you have some good questions.
No, no, I think that's, I mean, that gets it. It's really unfortunate. I think that we, you know, we can't. Have any say in the whole thing, but that is what it is right now, I guess, so. Sort of taking it up with the state legislators. I don't know what else there is to do. Is the homeowner alerted each time there's a complaint at their house?
No, uh, we have had contact. We now have his information entered. I, I could have found it before by going through. The Johnson County Beacon system, but we now have contact information for him following his complaint. About vandalism done to his home. And yes, we do. Plan on talking to him if there are any issues.
Yeah, just like if, if they hear there's repeated a pattern of. You know, ongoing issues at the property, maybe they would think about who's their, whoever their. Rental agency is that's.
I do not know how that works, uh. It was pretty evident in his conversation with Officer Akers that he. Had no control or no input in that, uh. The property was listed through a third party on with Airbnb and that person managed everything about it, uh, the rental, the collecting of fees. And everything about it, the owner went over there to check on the property. Of the middle of the week, of the following week and, and called us to. To issue a complaint. He had no idea that it was his tenants that were his guests that were responsible for it.
Okay, um. Let's go on to um, moving for with what the council would like to. Do with um. ATEs in the city. Uh, some thoughts, just some general questions or thoughts about it. In reviewing everything Steve sent and what the chief had gone through and what the uh. The manufacturer of the equipment. What he said, are there some thoughts anyone would like to share? With the council?
I have one question, and I don't know if this is a Steve or Troy. Uh, question and refresh my memory, uh, as far as the information that is gathered. Vehicles and, and things like that, is that information sold to a third party or who has access? To that information. Besides this, is, is there a federal? Uh, arm in there or state or county? I mean, who all has access to that information? Vehicles and, and license plate, uh, information.
It depends on the system, uh, for example, the system that. University of Iowa has installed around their. Their properties. I, and, and throughout Iowa City. That is part of it. The name of it is Flock, F L O C K, I believe, but Flock. And anybody that is registered with that system has access to that information. So for example, if. Orlando, for example, Disney World, if, if they had a flock system up and a vehicle that. The University of Iowa had entered as, hey, we think this vehicle might be associated with. These burglaries that were occurring in one of our commuter lots, uh, if that vehicle was. Seen on another flock system, you know, it all updates to the same database. That organization would get a hit, so that's the way flock works. The system that, at least I've had the most response with, that Gen Optics offers. Is not part of that same system, but they have their own, and I could find out specifically, to my knowledge, they don't sell any of that information, Doug, but I. I can't say that with certainty, and I can certainly follow up as far as who has access to it. You know, whether it's strictly law enforcement for law enforcement purposes, or whether there's a commercial side to it.
Well, that, that's my question is the commercial side of it, because you know, as well as I do. Uh, you know, even cell phone information, you know, your number's passed out there, and now you got every telemarketer on the planet calling you. And I just wanted to see if there wasn't gonna be a, an avenue for insurance companies to say, hey, we're seeing that you're in Iowa City, you can get lower rates. I mean, I. I don't think anybody's interested in that. That's why I was asking, is that information sellable to outside uh sources? You know, is it something that they can sell? Without our consent or with our consent or how that works?
And that may be in the contract. I wasn't reading for those specific items, but I can easily find out an answer for you on that and. And to rest of council, if you have any questions along those lines or any questions at all that you'd like me to try to get answers to. You know, I've shared with the information I know already, so I'm not sure I can answer any other questions. Uh, but I'll be glad to track down the information, so you can either tell them to me now, or you can send me an email and I can, I can hunt up the information for you, but it should be easy enough for me to do.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still in favor of uh. Moving forward with it, so I guess it's up to the rest of council what they want to do from this point, but uh. The feedback that I've been getting from the few. Local neighbors and people that I stopped and talked to and asked for their opinions on it to, again, the locals are all for it, but I'm sure the. Outside people that are trying to get to work are probably not gonna like it, so. There you go.
Yeah, generally I'm leaning uh for it as well. Um, one of the questions, I guess, with the. Ordinance or whatever it is that Steve Ballard wrote up, you know, I was just looking through that and. Do we have to make decisions on, like, right up front on what speeds uh equal what dollar amount fine? Or is that something that will be changed in the future?
Well. I mean, the answer is yes, you do have to, you do have to make a policy, so you do have to specify that in the ordinance. But Bobby, you, you, just like any other ordinance, you can change it, you know, you could collapse it and change it in one meeting, you. You obviously can change it with three readings of a, of an amendment to an ordinance. Um, you know, if, if, if things seemed um. I, I, you know. If, 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 if the council adopted certain parameters and then, you know, wa- wanted to change them and wanted to change them sooner. Then it could amend an ordinance. I mean, the council can give direction to the chief to, to not enforce it like that. Council shouldn't give direction to the chief to say, hey, it says, you know, five to ten is this much, change the amount. No, but the, but council say, you know what, i- unless they're at least going fifteen over, don't do it right or anything, and we're gonna change the ordinance, so. Council has complete flexibility, but yes, the council must set a policy by enacting an ordinance.
And Steve, I had a question on that as far as. Well, I ran up on it recently, for example, on a handicap parking ticket. Where our ordinances say the hand, the ticket for handicap parking uh in violation will be one hundred dollars. Or. The fine adopted by. State code.
Right.
Decades ago, it used to be a hundred dollar parking fine by state code, and it is now a two hundred dollar parking co- or parking fine. So I had a question about, first of all. Anyway, I had a question about it, and I could say, here's why it's two hundred dollars despite the amount being one hundred dollars. I don't know if it's possible for us, for example, to adjust or to adopt. If we're to move forward with it, to adopt. The state of Iowa's. Scheduled fine amounts for moving traffic violations. And they break it down by zones above or, or under highway speeds, but so for, for zones less than fifty-five miles an hour. It would still be if, from the city standpoint, we're still up. Even though I know there'll people, be people who think it's just a money grab, if we wrote them a civil violation and we based our. Traffic fine schedule on the state of Iowa's traffic fine schedule. And let's say, again, just for the sake of it being an easy, easy number, if you were going ten or over, it was a hundred dollars. I can't, I don't recall off the top of my head what it was. But it was a hundred dollars. If you're written a uniform traffic citation for. Or a hundred dollar fine, then court costs are added to that, surcharges. I mean, there's a, there's fees that are added to it, and you pay far more than one hundred dollars. But would it be possible so that we're not having to adjust it? I mean, certainly we could pick whatever we want, but could we just adopt? The state of Iowa's fee schedule, and that way we wouldn't have to change it. Sometime down in the future, because it would just change with the states.
Yeah, I think we could.
I like that.
And then the other thing, again, we're way, way, way away from it, but the other thing council would need to decide is. You know, I, the sample ordinance that, that. Uh, Steve sent out had fines, you know, it said, okay, one to five miles an hour is this, five to ten miles an hour is this. I, it's council's discretion in, in the end as to where we set. The number that people will start getting tickets, uh, start getting several, several fines for it, and I. Frankly, I don't envision. A time that we ever issue a civil fine for, for example, less than five miles an hour, and I think. I think if and when it gets to that time to, to put the ordinance, I, I just think it's confusing and, and it adds fuel to. If we spes- specifically specify a fine amount for one to five over, oh, yeah, see, look, if you go through University Heights, you're gonna get a ticket for going two over. When that's not the intent, intent is really to address those fifty percent of violations that are traveling ten or more. Miles per hour for the speed limit, and on our streets, if you slow down, heck, I don't know, if you slow down one in five cars. Then the next five cars behind them are gonna have to slow down too. There's no way they can swing out and pass. I really, really think this will. Lower speeds, and I think we'll be able to statistically show that this lower speeds. On our roadways and, and. Just by default makes our roadway safer because people are traveling closer to twenty-five miles an hour instead of. Instead of closer to thirty-five or, or forty miles an hour.
Well, I, I think the, the main goal, if I'm not mistaken, is to uh. Change driving behaviors, habits, whatever you want to call it, a- and I think if we start. With this, you know, the basic state level. Is kind of a, a, a guide point, you know, I guess, when we start noticing. Speeding has gone down, I mean, if it stays, you know, marginally, you know, maybe then we can address raising the rates, but uh. I think at this point, just getting the, the message across it. You know, anything over an excessive amount is gonna be, you know, met with a, a, a fine. Set forward by the state, but to, I, I don't know. How very many people could afford to say, oh, yeah, it's just a hundred dollar fine and. Come back, back blown into town, same speed the next day, I mean. I think the goal is to change their, their driving habits and, and their. You know, district or, or, or posted speeds, so I, I think even starting with the, the basic state level, I think it'd be a good starting point.
And I, and I, I use the words modify behavior and voluntary compliance, and that's exactly what we're shooting for, and as, as Steve pointed out. Whether it's the fine structure itself or whether it's. Where we set the limit that a, a civil citation or civil fine would be issued. That would need to be decided be, be decided before we implement the program. But it's still up to us. The company is, is very adamant that, that it local control and we could change that. You know, if, if we set it, it, I don't know hypothetically, if we set it at ten miles an hour, but we weren't comfortable that, we can raise or lower it if we needed.
So basically, we need to fill out a, a menu or get our nuts and bolts in line here, and before we even move forward with the. A, a, a resolution. Announcement.
I've not asked the company to come in and do an assessment. I've talked with the company extensively, uh. They followed up following our last meeting and. And we're interested to how it was perceived and what they could do and whether we remained interested. I, I think, you know, as we move forward, we'll need to start doing those things. The company is very open to our input on where we feel. These devices would have the best impact for the goals that we are trying to achieve. But they also, the, the company is getting a percentage, and that's their profit and, and they aren't in it. You know, to do charity work, so uh, they're going to need to do an assessment and make sure that there are. There is enough of a problem that one statistically they can make a difference, and two, they can do so while still generating a profit for their organization. Uh, we talked a little bit about percentages last time. Uh, just as a reminder. Gen Optics breaks down their. Their percentages based on community size and traffic flow. University Heights typically would be considered a small community, but they were allowing us to plug into. You know, a larger community uh. Break down so that. The percentage was more in our favor, and that was based really just on past working relationships, but. I, I think they're, I think they're being fair.
Can I ask you a question and, and just? This is you, not, not chief, but just Troy. Uh, on, on a scale of one to ten, where do you feel? This is needed, you know, because, you know, exactly right, they're, they're trying to sell us something, you know, like any other salesman would do, but do we need it? And I'd like to hear your opinion on the, the, the need basis on a scale of. One to ten, where do you feel we should be as a, as a community? I mean, this is something we should really, yeah, this is a ten or, uh, you know, it's a five. Or it's not a huge problem is. You know, like you say, they're, they're all trained together. It's not like you're gonna swing out past, like you say, so. Uh, I'd like to hear what your honest. Unbiased opinion is on a scale of one to ten, where do you think we, we should fall in at with this?
Sure, and I'm not gonna give you that simple of an answer. Uh, as a, as a community, I've been here. Little over four years now and. While certainly crime and, and a feeling of being safe in their home and neighborhood is important to any community. University Heights has that. I, I feel. Far more complaints about. Proportionally about. Vehicle speeds and parking issues, and then probably game day issues. Than I do on, oh, I, I don't feel like it's safe to walk down my streets, so that's good. In, in essence, the. The complaints are certainly public safety related still, speed of vehicles is, but they're. They're down on the list from what maybe some other communities might deal with where it's actual. Personal save, safety being outside of my house. So to our residents, I believe that traffic speeds. Are very, very important. I, I mean, I would probably put it at, at an eight, uh. Now. I'll qualify all that by saying, you know, I don't hear from the people who are happy with, who are content with. Oh, yeah, everybody's driving a, I think, an appropriate speed, so I'm gonna call the chief and tell him that. I hear from those people who, who. Say, you know what, there's a reason we have speed limits of twenty miles an hour in University Heights. Vehicle speed, we're a small condensed neighborhood, we're an old neighborhood, houses are close, houses are close to the street. We are a family oriented neighborhood, and people are out playing, dogs are out walking, and. It's noticed when a car goes by at. Thirty-five miles an hour down Cozer, which, again, Iowa City might think that's, that's acceptable. The people who live on Cozer. Don't think that's acceptable, uh. Traffic surveys bear that out and, and. Again, the MPO Kent Ralston has said, you know, eighty-fifth percentile is. Between twenty-nine and thirty miles an hour, that's pretty darn good. It doesn't warrant any traffic calming measures. It comes up every year in the time that I've been here, multiple times a year. What are we going to do about speeds on Cozer? Or what are we going to do about stop signs? Uh, people roll through stop signs. I just, I think this system addresses that. I think that if we choose to pursue it, we do so. Not quietly. I think that we, I think that we make sure everybody knows that we're doing it, and I think that we invite public. Input, and I think that we, we're as, not just transparent, but we're as open as we can be. We're not trying to make University Heights a speed trap. We are not.
Right.
We want everybody to know that cameras are up. Just don't speed for six blocks, don't speed for six blocks. We take the safety of our community. Of our kids, of our pets, of our, of the people walking through on the way to and from the hospital. We take all this very, very seriously. It's important to us. We just ask that you drive the speed limit or close to it, and you won't get a ticket. How is it a speed trap if you're never gonna get a ticket if you comply?
Right.
So.
John, you had something you wanted to say. You raised your hand. I'm sorry. I'm gonna give you a break, Troy.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mayor, uh, but I'm not sure what the. I might be vi- violating prot- protocol, and I apologize. But let, let me say that I'm speaking on visit, uh, this is public comment. This is not from the city treasurer. I'm fully behind the ATE. But I wanted to point out that everybody's probably aware of this, that there's a bill, the Iowa Legislature. Currently being proposed to regulate this stuff. That you would have to apply for a permit with Iowa DLT. They will come out and assess the site. They're gonna establish possible minimums like. The, you have to be over ten miles an hour before a ticket could be issued. That the state's gonna want some compensation from this. That's the only reason why I want enter, to interject. I mean, maybe Steve Ballard's all over this, and you guys are. That's the only reason why I want enter to interject, I mean, maybe Steve Ballard's all over this and you guys are and. Very aware of it, but and it's, like I said, it's just a bill that's in the legislature, it's either something's passed. Or got on the governor's desk, but I thought necessary to point it out that there's something in the works. At the state level that could impact uh with the city councils doing.
Steve Ballard, y- you addressed that in your report and you keep good track, so could you review some of that?
You bet, there were several uh bills in the legislature, uh, just as John noted, um, and uh. As I was outlining things to put in my legal report and. Thinking about it, uh, I was I was wondering about how we would address those and then the legislature adjourned. And they didn't pass any of those bills, uh, to my knowledge and so I followed up with some people at the Iowa League of Cities just to make sure I hadn't missed anything, but. None of those bills passed, uh, you know, uh, John's point is a good one. I I I'd mentioned to Chief Kelsey earlier, uh, when we were talking about tonight's meeting, there's some, there's some old saying that's probably not the right one, but. Something about no, no person's, you know, property or rights are safe if the legislature's in session. And that that may be a bit of a cynical overstatement, but my point is the legislature is gonna come back into session in January and who knows what happens then. Uh, and and the uh, the contracts uh, with uh, with a vendor, if the city were to engage. Provide, they 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 take all that risk, they take the equipment risk, they take the, you know, the investment risk. It's, uh, if 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 they put put ATE cameras up and they use them for five months. And then the legislature says you can't do it anymore, uh, then then that's on them, it won't cost the city anything and uh, we we're not making any sort. Of financial uh commitment or uh incurring any obligation with a vendor uh of an ATE. Uh, arrangement, but uh, it it's a good point and I think all we can do, I don't, I will say, I don't have my finger on the pulse. Of how. Uh, how likely it is any of those provi- provisions is gonna pass. I just know that they haven't, they didn't pass this year, you know. If if people had the view that it's not worth going down this road because they are gonna pass next year and we should wait to see what they do. You know, I mean, that's your view and maybe and and maybe you're right, I don't know. Uh, but but what I do know is that the proposal from the 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 vendors, the 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 Chief Kelsey has talked about. That they take all of that risk and then I also do know that this year, uh, there hasn't been anything that's been enacted.
Is there any other states that have enacted uh similar legislation that's all that did pass?
Boy Doug, I don't. I don't know the answer to that, I mean, and the the easiest people to ask would be the vendors that Troy dealt with. But uh, if I if I had to hazard a guess, I would guess, yes, they're probably, I mean, I'm sure there's some states where it's outlawed, I would guess there is, but I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a hard enough time keeping track of Iowa State Legislature. But um, yeah, are there? What does council wanna do, proceed, I feel like I, like Steph has spoke about it positively. And Doug, you have and Bobby has, so I feel like. At least three council wanna move this forward some. Way, is that correct? I feel like. We should keep going down this road.
I I support it too. Um, I think last time we talked, uh, when we got the presentation. They did talk about having a public information campaign, it seemed like they were. Suggesting or leaning heavily into the ten mile per hour buffer. Um, I don't know if that's gonna satisfy the people on Cozer Avenue with a twenty mile per hour speed limit. It might not make them happy to have ten, ten mile per hour as the buffer fifty percent over the speed limit, so. But we can work that out as we go.
I'm, I'm hopeful, Tim, that. The people who comply or are. Modify their behavior because of the the use of of ATE, I'm hopeful that they slow not just to ten over. For example, but to six over or whatever, to make sure that they don't get a ticket and again, that slows up anybody that's behind them. Uh, so I'm, I. I really, really believe, especially after my conversations with Kent Ralston, that this. This will significantly lower the number of vehicles we have. Uh, I I think it'll reduce our fifteen percent considerably. And and that isn't, if you'd ask me that when I was with Iowa City, I I would not have given you the same response, but I I just, I've come completely one eighty on this issue.
I I like the uh, the the ability to free up. Uh, you know, Melrose coming in where now you can focus more on these side streets, you know, cause you know inevitably they're gonna try to. Play cat mouse with these cameras, so you know, they're gonna start using kosher and and Georgian come down that way, so I think that would be. A good place to strategically have an officer sitting there and so. You know, they're not using, you know, that as a bypass to get around the cameras. Unless you wanna put cameras there as well, I guess, but I didn't know what level, how many cameras we're talking for doing the whole kibabula for just doing Melrose, so. Uh, but I think it would be great to have you guys freed up to monitor the the problem streets there, you know.
And as part of the package, uh, at least with this particular vendor, they would provide handheld units, so think of a handheld radar unit. That tied into their system, uh, while we do have some handheld units. Our our radar unit is not currently functional and it it's a significant investment to get it back and it's limited. And its use, uh, so not only are we able to tie into their system, but we get the the latest and greatest as far as. Available equipment and that's all part of. Or the buy-in with this particular company, so it it does free us up and gives us the equipment to do the type of spot enforcement that you're talking about.
Yeah, I had the impression they were talking about Melrose Sunset, George and Cozer. East of Sunset anyway, but that all needs to be proved out, I suppose, with their analysis.
Those were our suggestions, uh, they would come in and and do an assessment of those locations and really of our whole community, I mean, we are. We're point two seven square miles, we have, we leave just under five miles of streets if you lay them all in and. They should be able to do. A very thorough assessment of our community and where these type of devices would best serve our purposes.
What was the minimum contract that they wanted? Did they want like a three-year or five-year or to invest their equipment in our city? Or is it just a year to year?
Dave, do you recall off the top of your head? I do not.
No, I don't either, I'd have to look, Doug.
Okay.
I wanna say that it was just twelve months from once the system became up and running, uh, but I'm not one hundred percent sure of that and I. I'll I'll confirm it.
All all I recall is that it was, it was very. Favorable to us as the consumer, you might say, the customer, just wasn't a lot that they were willing to. Hold us to, if you will, but well, but I'll have to look at the details too.
So Steve Ballard, uh, aside from, you know, the the schedule of speeding tickets and let's say we just all as a council say, okay, we wanna give you direction to go with. Troy's recommendation, which is. Go with the Iowa DOT, whatever theirs is, what else in this ordinance? Our points of discussion, really, I mean, as I think about it, aside from, you know. A speeding ticket and the amount. What else is there that we would need to decide on? You know what I mean?
Yeah, I do, uh, it's a fair question, I mean, it's pretty plain vanilla, uh, Troy. Surveyed several cities and gave me several examples of ordinance, as I found some others. They're not identical, but they all kinda say the same thing and there's not much to them, you know, it's just a matter of how you're, you know, what what your. What your limits are, what your your fine schedule is, uh, and how you uh will go about uh collecting or enforcing. And then those are all pretty, tho- those portions are all pretty uniform, now. Now, if there's anything in the ordinance that that you all read and you say, well, I don't like that or could we change that, I mean, we can talk about anything, but. Bobby, to answer your question, there's really not any big uh additional items that come to my mind where, hey, you need to make a policy decision on. You know. You know, option A or option B.
Yeah, that's great, that was my ass, that answers it. So, next, I guess, if if everyone's seeming, well, I guess maybe I haven't heard from Lisa yet, I don't know if you wanted to speak up or not, Lisa, but.
I'm in favor of moving ahead and I just wanted to say my notes. From last time, say, I want your contract.
Okay, so so do we just need to kinda decide now what direction to give Steve Ballard to finalize the ordinance?
Well, don't we need any evaluation, have the company do an evaluation of the city, is that right?
I think that's personally, I think that's the next best step, I'm not sure whether they'll come in and do their own traffic survey or whether that's part of. Once they get the cameras up, but if if you're comfortable. With Gen Optic and again, they're one of three that I reached out to and they've been the most responsive. Uh, I will continue to work with them if there's some different process you wanna go through. To select a provider, then we should probably be doing that now before, before I work with Gen Optic. Uh, to do an assessment of our city and to move forward with with equipment. Steve, you can probably answer that the best.
Well, yeah, if the council wants to do some sort of competitive process or get some different additional feedback, that that's a council prerogative, if the council's. Comfortable with what the the what Chief Kelsey has reviewed and and wants to move forward here. I mean, move forward, the next steps would be, you know, we have the study done, I can put together an ordinance and, you know, refine what I've put together a little bit more. Incorporate some of those scheduled violations from the Iowa code and have things ready to go. Um, and you know, if you if you don't vote on it next month, uh, you know, obviously we have to look at the contract as well, so. This is gonna take a little while in my mind.
So at the same time, yeah, at the same time, you're gonna be working with the uh ordinance.
Yeah.
And defining that at the same time, going with this company to. Survey the city, see, right, chief?
Right, so I'll contact, and it sounds like, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'll contact uh Gen Optic and. Uh, have them come back into our community and and I'll walk through, I think it was Tim that pointed out, but yes. Um, Melrose, someplace on Melrose, I'm thinking someplace on Cozer, east of Melrose. They have the ability to do stop signs, so stop sign at Cozer and. And George, and I'm not sure about Sunset, but anyway, I'll. Take them through our community and point out where we've received com- community complaints. Uh, and about what issues and and have them report back to me or or say, yes, this is what we can do for your community and. And we'll move it forward that way and I and I should be able to get all that done by next meeting.
The only, no other question I had on it is Troy, you recommended the Iowa DOTs use their guidelines or whatever. Is that specific enough for our community? We don't have any highways here, right? We don't have any, so.
I I. And I would defer to, I I would value input from Steve and from council on this, I personally think one of the advantages of going with. The city, or I'm sorry, the state's fine schedule or something less than the state's fine schedule. Is again, what we collect will be less than. And what the offender pays will be less than what. The offender would have paid, had they been written a traffic citation and I think that it. And there is a financial component to it, it's 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 silly to deny that, but I think that that takes away a lot of the argument that. This is meant to be a money grab, it is not meant to be a money grab, it's meant to slow speeds down, so that's. If the state is saying, here's what we think is an appropriate fine schedule. I I don't know how much flack we could take for saying, you know what, we're just going to adopt this schedule, but we're not adding in. Any of the extra fees that necessarily get added to a state issued traffics or to a traffic citation issued into a criminal court. If that makes sense.
How much uh say does Gen Optics have in this, are they gonna say, no, the minimum is state level or?
They, they may have a say as far as minimum fine, but I know that fine structures that have been adopted by Gen Optic. Some of those fine structures have been less than. The state scheduled fine, so again, I it's it's information that I can all gather with them when I meet with them sometime in the next thirty days. But I think they will be, based on my conversations with them and the numbers that we're considering, I think that they'll be very okay with that.
Okay, and so I guess, just so, uh, cause here's where I'm at with it, I think we're all kind of on the board and wanting to move forward and I don't know that I feel any. Necessarily, or, I mean, we we don't wanna push it through too quickly, but I guess, Troy, can we, can we? Just say, okay, we're gonna recommend that you give guidance to Steve Ballard on what to prepare, what to have prepared for us for next time based. On what you think and then we'll, at next meeting, we'll start that, whenever that is, approve that.
And I I only words that I take exception with or give guidance to Steve Ballard, I give him the input. I, he knows far more than I do as far as uh what's appropriate ordinance and and existing law, but yeah, I'll be, I'll be. Glad to work with him and I can gather information and move, I can in good faith move the far process forward with Jan Optic. I'm not saying to the contract level or to the ordinance level, but I can't, we're moving down the road and and we wanna take the next step or two.
We we can come back with a re- a recommendation.
Good, right, sounds good, very good.
Good.
Apologies, Mayor, for the time, amount of time that I've taken on this.
No, it's important, it's important to take this time. Uh, this is a, you know, an important, and I'm glad that you uh spoke about us all being on the same page. I think that's extremely important and uh, I. I, you know, as I told you. You know, all your years of uh law enforcement. Just mean a lot. Of what, you know, what you can do to help us move this forward, I think that's helped me a lot. To get through this and understand it more. And thank you. Any, any other comments?
How much media coverage will this guy gather for you, Louise?
Well, for you too, Doug.
But I think as we go forward with this, we make a point. Of getting out in front of that and not just being responsive and, you know, whether that's, anyway, I I. I think that, I think that we can successfully navigate that and navigate it to our advantage as as we move through the process, I'm confident of.
Can we get a coming soon billboard? For kidding, let's move on.
Okay, we'll move on to uh finance, uh, we're gonna be having the special meeting on. What is it, May twenty-third, uh, Bobby, did you have anything else?
No, nothing, no.
Okay, very good, we'll go to uh. Streets and sidewalks and engineer report, uh, Ryan, you sent. An engineer report, uh. Would you like to make some comments?
Uh, yeah, I can.
I mean, I know you have. A a resolution.
Yeah, we've got two resolutions tonight for council to consider, um, I'll run through uh some of these items real quick on the engineer report first and then. Uh, we can dive into those guys, it's gonna, it's tough to follow Chief Kelsey on all that. Exciting uh camera stuff, but uh, uh, so.
The same, didn't I?
No, no, it's gonna be hard to live up to all that, um, so MetroNet. Uh, is still working on restoration work, um, they started doing some sodding and then didn't really take care of it, uh, so it's all dead. Uh, they're gonna have to redo that, they're supposed to be doing that um, this week, um, at least getting started in that process. Um, so they are well aware of their responsibilities to maintain the sod for for four weeks, which means also providing water. Uh, until it's established for any, um, you know, excavations or or uh utility potholes that they had to do while they were doing their boring, so. M- Melrose Complete Street Project, um, we don't have as much identified yet as we wanted to, there's a lot of other things going on. Um, in university heights that we're trying to get out, including the um Monroe Street project that Louise brought up that will. Um, and a pretty, you guys being available for that June twenty-seven special meeting, so we can award that project and get. A contractor under contract to get that work started, um, that was one that we've talked about with the budget and the CIP stuff. Um, trying to use up some some funds yet this year on construction there, so. Kind of, you know, fast forwarding that one, um, the last, this last week or two here. To get that going, but on Melrose, uh, we are pretty certain that uh that there's two driveways at one thousand seven, one thousand nine, as I've gotten the report here that are. Gonna be removed with that intersection work, um, and the complete streets work, I I believe Steve Ballard's had some conversation. Uh, I believe Steve Ballard's had some conversations with those property owners already. Uh, and and they are agreeable um, to that and and relocating the access up off all of court, so. We'll continue those conversations and um, and then identifying other, what other impacts we're going to have with. With that Melrose project. Horn Elementary, I don't have a whole lot of update there since last meeting. We haven't really seen a full submittal yet. Recent middle. Uh, street sweeping, it's not com- completed quite yet. Uh, I, I'll probably reach out to Streve again tomorrow. As of last week, they. They hadn't finished, um, mostly because it's been such good weather to. Or concrete, so um, they're going to get back and finish that work. Uh, I think after our rain this weekend on Sunday, you know, they may have had an opportunity already. Uh, I just hadn't called them yet today, so. Oak Crest Ave, Masca Drive, so this is one that we have a resolution for tonight, so council will consider. Resolution toward the construction contract to Midwest Concrete. Um, so there. We took bids to, we had two bids and that bid tabulations included um, in the report, but their bid was ninety-two thousand. Three hundred seventy-three dollars and forty-eight cents. Engineer's estimate was one hundred thousand, nine hundred twenty-three dollars, so they were. You know, like nine thousand dollars low. From our estimate, so we are recommending award to Midwest Concrete for that work.
So let's go ahead and consider that resolution now, Ryan, okay?
Good.
Resolution twenty fifteen is before you accepting that bid. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Doug, second?
I'll second.
Second by Tim? Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Schroder.
Hi.
Scott.
Hi.
Swales.
Hi.
Gone.
Hi.
More.
Hi.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Thanks, Ryan. Keep, you can keep going.
Yeah. Yeah, no problem. All right, so then I've got pavement markings. We had, do have a another resolution for pavement markings, so we do this project every year. Um, the last couple of years, we've been doing um, some of the pa- painting with um, a high build, which is a little bit more durable. Type of waterborne paint. Um, ISS stuff in in this last month in April. And I I I do think that the high build's lasting better, uh, the, those areas we're focusing on are are. In the intersections on Melrose and then around some of the school crosswalk blocks, so. Um, my opinion is those are lasting longer. However, I I just wasn't really prepared to not paint all those again, so I'm I'm including repainting of. Pretty much everything again, um, just to make sure we don't end up. Six months down the road and and realizing they're starting to wear out, so. So that quote, the quantities are probably higher than what I think Josiah was using when we uh, put together the budget. Um, in January, so the quote's higher than what the budget. Uh, the approved budget was showing, but. Um, based off reviewing numbers from last year and other projects that we've already had um, bid in in North Liberty. Or that they're competitive, um, so I don't believe there's any sort of. Price gouging or anything going on. We just have more quantity than was anticipated during the budget, so. Um, so we do recommend approval of that quotation, so.
Sounds good.
That's resolution twenty-three sixteen.
Twenty-three sixteen, yep.
Okay, is there a motion?
A motion.
Motion by Steph, is there a second? Second by Doug. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote.
Dot.
Hi.
Swales.
Hi.
Gone.
Hi.
More.
Hi.
Schroder.
Hi.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Okay, Ryan.
All right.
Thank you.
Almost done here, so I've got just a handful of these miscellaneous items on here. Just wanted to recap some of those, uh, wrap up some of them up. So the pedestrian push button on the uh. Northwest corner of Melrose and Sunset was repaired, um. And we've got that invoice and that was on the warrants list for this month as well. And then um, item B, I actually. Didn't have an update when I sent this out on the um. The defibrillator, the A E D box, um, so. I've been talking with the contractor today. A little bit more about this and um, so we do have a location narrowed in. We we considered. In the intersection of. Uh, kosher and Melrose is, um, and I guess golf you have is the intersection we're looking at placing the box and. Uh, we we did look at. Attaching it to one of the traffic signal poles, the difficulty there was. The the box needs to be mounted at a certain height above the ground. And there's already push buttons for the pedestrian crosswalks right at that same height, and that's. Generally an A and ADA wheelchair accessibility requirement, so. It wouldn't have been. He he wouldn't have been able to fix them and still have it face the sidewalk or the street. It would have had to face the the backside of the. The pole, so we're going to put it. Planning to put it a- attached to the traffic signal cabinet that's in Triangle Park, so. That's a spot he said is got power ready and available and should work at, work well to uh, attach it to that. Cabinet, so he should be able to complete that work yet this week, now that I've kind of got, go ahead, giving him the go ahead on that, so. And then I've got Rush, Rush uh, Boyer had a. He's finished the spring pothole patching work on all the streets. I think last month. He had completed them uh, quite a few of them, but not quite all of them, so. So that works done.
This is Troy, a couple of things. The. Push button repair at Melrose and Sunset that Ryan said had been submitted for pay and was on the warrants. Uh, I also submitted that to the hit and run driver's insurance company and that has been approved for payment. I don't believe we received it yet, but Mike might be able to. To correct me on that. Uh, and the. Work for the installation of the Pulse Point enclosure in A E D. Ryan did ask me if it was okay to proceed with that. I did not consult with council, but based on previous conversations with the mayor, I told him to go ahead and schedule to make that happen, so just so you're aware.
And as Troy just asked, that explains to me the check I found today for seven hundred ninety-four dollars and thirty-five cents, so. That just came in.
Excellent. All market invoices paid. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Mike and Chief and Ryan. Are there any questions for Ryan? Okay, very good job, Ryan. Thank you. We'll go on to uh, building zoning and sanitation. Is there anything there?
Nothing here.
Okay, thank you, Tim. And eGovernment, Lisa, you. Sent a written report around.
I did. Thank you to all our cleanup day volunteers. Did you all see the photo in Troy's report of the bear that he brought to cleanup day? No. Okay, so. I'd like to hear from you, from council members, from Troy. John Brown, Mike Haverkamp, about changing the. Timing of cleanup day, and you can read about it in my reports. A few residents suggested. A later date, we could go. As late as August twenty-fourth, but we cannot do all. Or obvious reasons. So let me know what you think about. Dates for cleanup day. And bike breakfast is Wednesday, May twenty-fourth. Jeff Spike and Ski is going to be. Preparing some delicious food. And if you can bike over or walk over or even drive over. Stop by and. Have breakfast with everybody. Farmer's Market starts May twenty-third, the old. Former university athletic club parking lot where it used to be. Tuesdays, four to six P M. And the citywide garage sale, Saturday, June third. Eight to noon. And Mikey, I'm sure you'll put all those in announcements. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Any questions for Lisa? Comments, okay. Uh, I think then you kind of covered all the announcements. Unless someone else had an announcement they wanted to make. Then is there any objection to adjournment? Hearing none, the meeting's adjourned by unanimous consent.